Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the former school committee, facilities and operations subcommittee meeting to order. Secretary of Roll Call, please.
Mr. Costa.
Here.
Mr. Hart.
Here.
Mr. Hetzel.
Here.
Pursuant to the old meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Please join me in saluting the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, omnipotent, just as a whole. We have a number of items on the agenda tonight. First one will be discussion of the full core construction project of the former Stone School. Mr. Pacheco, Superintendent of Law?
Sure. I'll just frame it and turn it over to Ken, and then he can answer your questions, too. We have an opportunity to look at moving the entry around, if you will, with the MSBA. I'll look at a full core program of the former Stone School of Globe Street site. The goal for us, thinking strategically about the future of the system, is that we're thinking that this would be an apt opportunity for us to build a new facility that would help alleviate space at the elementary level, essentially create a kindergarten center on the south side of the city. We could pull kindergartens out of our elementary schools, reduce some class size through continuing investment in class size reduction at the elementary level, but also increase a few, not all, but a few four-year-old classrooms. So this facility that we're looking at would house, I don't know, 75, 80% five-year-olds in kindergarten with a few full-day four-year-old programs as well, based on the MSBA assessment need review, is what they call it, I guess. We know that that space is not a large space, but it's large enough for that, what we think is a perfect purpose. So what we're asking the committee for tonight is to discuss it, refer it to a full committee, and then for us to get permission, seek permission, to be able to go engage with the MSBA on this specific project.
So this project, core project, is due, an SOI is due by April 15th. And as the superintendent said, we have approximately 45 classrooms across the district that are pre-Ks and our Ks. And any amount thereof, we could transfer over to this particular site, would allow us to do some class size reduction, but it also may allow us to add a few classrooms here and there for our bubbles, because we end up somewhere along the line with, for instance, Fonsica has a bubble move in third grade, fourth grade, so we have an odd number of classes in that third grade, and the next year, that odd number will move to the fourth and the fifth. Well, periodically, that jumps up in different schools depending on their enrollment. With lessening the amount of Ks and pre-Ks in some of these schools, it will give us a little more room to capitalize on the neighborhood school concept also. A lot of parents don't get their opportunity to go to a neighborhood school because the schools fill up real quick. Fonsica is one. It's over-applied, so to speak, by about 100 students. So therefore, we have to now bus students to other, because it's our change, not theirs. We have to bus students to other schools. So that's an expense that we incur because we don't have room in those certain schools. So, for instance, we have Tansy, which has that small population of students, so we may not remove that K from the Tansy, because it works there. We may be able to add a pre-K to Tansy if we make some other configuration at Tansy. Other schools have two or three pre-Ks, four kindergartens in that classroom, seven classrooms would make a big difference in those neighborhoods in allowing us to bring first through five back into the neighborhood and allow those parents to do that. So this would be through attrition that we would occupy this newer building. As you can see with Durfee, the project started, inception started in '12, and completion is in '22. So it's a long period of time. So with planning a project like this, a core project, we would be looking at a building that would possibly be ready sometime between 2025 and 2026, by the time we go through the What we're looking at is, in the initial plans, keeping the building as is and building basically two legs off the side of that, crossing across Pebble Street in the rear and allowing a courtyard in the middle. So the play area would be built in for safety reasons. Students will have that inside piece, we will have a cafeteria, and it's only two stories tall. Because of the age group, we can't go taller than that. And that two-story structure would include classrooms and all of the other facilities that are required for that age group. And also, it would allow the district to provide services needed for pre-K and K in this facility, as opposed to spread out throughout the district. I think what it'll also allow us to do, and we will eventually do the numbers before this goes into MSBA, is now that we free up those classrooms, when we, when students leave this facility, they're going to go to their neighborhood school. Let's say about 85 to 90% of them. Right now, we don't have that ability. So people who live in the Tansy neighborhood are going to go to Tansy Spencer-Borden, but that overflow ends up somewhere else. The Fonsica neighborhood, that overflow is going everywhere across the district to try and make room. So in some instances, Henry Lord, they've got the ASD strand, it'll stay at Henry Lord. So there'll be a K through eventually eight in Henry Lord. We won't disrupt the work, the hard work that's been done to put these strands in place, whether it be foundation strands or ASD, but what we need to do is move away from the trying to fill the slots in an elementary school with kindergarten students and then disappointing parents, and once they're in another school, there's no chance of coming back to that neighborhood school. So this is going to allow us to prescreen students, get students where they need to be, and hopefully make quite a few more parents happy with that neighborhood experience when they get out of kindergarten.
Yeah, Kenny, so I just want to make sure I got it straight. April 15th, you got to submit-
For the core.
For the core.
Right.
To MSBA.
Yes.
On the, I'm sorry, the Stone School on Globe Street.
Yes, yes.
And what's the size of, I know you mentioned it, but as far as classes-
Yeah, so probably it's going to be 90, between 90 and 110,000 square foot building-
Okay.
-when it's completed, of which 20,000 is a renovation. That would mimic Laterno, Fonsica, more or less. I think Laterno, I think Fonsica is about 90,000, Laterno's 120. So in a different configuration, they're both two-story buildings, so it would look something like that.
And how many classrooms are there? I mean, I know-
We wouldn't exceed, I guess his capacity in the building would be about 550.
550.
We're talking about 25, yeah, 25, yeah.
Yeah. And you're talking about, you said, kindergarten?
So mostly kindergarten, but if we could fit a couple four-year-olds to help us expand four-year-olds-
Right.
We would do that as well.
Okay.
So it's not going to be all kindergarten kids in the city-
Yeah.
But it could help alleviate a lot of pressure points, particularly at the Fonsica and places like that where we have density.
Now, the school, once it's completed in 2025 or 2026, you're, we're going to be getting the students from that particular neighborhood at that Globe location, or is it going to be all over the city?
We would be getting, we would look at all our nines-
Yep.
So all of our Ks through, across the city in that new facility. So the one thing about the facility is it's always going to have brand-new kids to the district, or the pre-Ks moving up.
Right.
It's not going to be someone moving from another area, because they'll already be too old.
Got you. Yeah, I'm talking about when it's completed, where are we going to be drawing the kids from? Is it going to be strictly from, like, the Varisor?
It would be citywide.
It would be citywide.
But again, a couple of pockets would remain. So we are going to have a transportation issue.
I was just going to bring that up, yeah.
What we've noticed across the district is of all of our age groups, K, pre-K, and first grade, a lot of transportation from parents.
Correct.
So that shouldn't change with a facility like this. Parents, especially at that age group, want to bring their own, their kids to school, those who can. So we already, we already transport pre-Ks now. We transport kindergarteners to different schools now, so there are kindergarteners and pre-Ks who are riding buses right now. The difference is the pre-Ks are handled a little different, they're in car seats, and depending on the size of the Ks, they're in car seats.
No, I mean, I'm absolutely all for it. You know, I think all of us, you know, throughout the campaign and even, you know, before that, have said that we need more room for children, specifically for pre-K or kindergarten, first grade. So, I mean, whatever we can do to alleviate the other schools and provide more classrooms for those children, I'm all for it. There's, to me, there's no arena. I just wish that, you know, it would be done sooner, but that's the way that process goes, so I yield with that. Thank you.
Mr. Costa.
Good, thanks.
All right. A few questions for me. So this seems like a pretty large project.
It is.
Right? Especially with that capacity and comparing it to Fonsica or Laterno, I think you might have mentioned. So this school, I don't know exactly what's in the old school, so is there a gymnasium already? Is there any type of auditorium? Is that being considered as part of the project?
So it would have a cafeteria-
Okay.
-is what we would put in this building. We put a cafeteria. There is a basement in that current building that wouldn't be used any longer because it's three-story, so we can only have students on two-story. So basically, the other building would be more or less slab-on-grade. The building would be built up, it would be handicap accessible, that new, that existing building would be handicap accessible. Obviously, the architects will weigh in on the look, but I'm guessing that the look from Globe Street will be that it all mimics the current stone building on both sides, and then the look would change as it goes around the rest of the building. As I said, the inside will have a courtyard, will have age-appropriate play areas, artificial turf, kind of like Fonsica, so it'll be maintenance-free on the inside, on day-to-day stuff. And the facility would be, so bathrooms would be sized for student size-
Right, right.
And the amount of bathrooms in the building would be appropriate for that age group, because they usually put bathrooms in between two Ks and all the way down the line.
Like a Tansy.
Yeah. It would be like the Tansy, the caf, cafeteria, auditorium, it would be like a multipurpose space, just like Tansy.
Right, but not just like Tansy, bigger than Tansy, right?
Bigger, because-
Tansy's a little bit tight.
There's only 300 kids.
And the bathrooms.
Right, yeah.
Right.
But it wouldn't be a separate gym.
Right. It would be similar to what we have going on at the elementary schools now, where, like you said, cafeteria. It serves as the cafeteria and auditorium and some basketball hoops in there.
And that's right.
Right.
Exactly.
The court there. All right. So if you're going to push this forward, you need a vote to refer this to the full committee?
So if we refer this to the full committee, what it'll allow at that point, again, I don't need an answer at the next committee meeting, but I would, I would need an answer so that I can start the process. Again, there's no financial obligation with applying. It doesn't come into play until we enter into the feasibility study. So it would need to go to city council after an approval from the school committee, if that was the, what the school committee wanted. The council would have to approve it to move into the next step. And then the core project, usually, we don't hear from until September, October. The accelerated repair, we hear usually by June, whether or not we're accepted. And again, accelerated repairs are a much quicker project than a core.
So I'll make a motion to refer to the full committee?
Second. Motion be by Mr. Hart, second by Mr. Costa. Roll call.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Next, we have the discussion and vote to refer the accelerated repair program in Wiley School.
So the Wiley School, Ken will give you the details, as you know, is on the north side of the city. We're experiencing essentially three potential needs. We don't have yet an identified exact what yet, but we know it's in an age group from four to 12. So the Wiley School's a small, two-unit school, and the needs that we have is, A, could be kindergarten center, early childhood and kindergarten, could be elementary school, class size reduction space, it could also be, as Stone continues to expand, the elementary side of Stone. So those are the options. What we're asking, though, tonight is to move forward with the proposal to the MSBA on the green repair, which is the-
Accelerator repair.
Accelerator repair, which would include the windows, roofs-
Boilers and doors.
Boilers and doors.
So, as you know, the age of the building, 1910, if I'm not mistaken. The Wiley is a six-room, it's a one-unit school, unlike the Watson and the Westall, a single unit.
Yeah, one unit, sorry.
So it's only six, yeah, it's only a six-unit, a six-room building. It has one center room that was library, a combination library and gym up on the second floor, and the basement would serve as the cafeteria and also a gym, a gym area down in that basement. The property is much smaller than the Stone School area, but the accelerated repair project, no matter what we would do, would give us a tighter envelope, which is important. You know, we don't have as much water damage in that building as we had in Watson and in Westall, so it's, we're almost at that point of no return. We're getting to where we've got to spend a little bit of money if we want to ever use that building again. So the accelerated repair program, in my opinion, is the best way we could go at that building. It would give us the quickest results and allow us to occupy that building quicker. Now, the accelerated repair program doesn't go into ADA compliant, and it doesn't go into anything other than that particular piece. So we could, when this project goes into accelerated repair, we could run into the same issue we ran into at Westall and at Watson, which is an ADA upgrade, which would mean we need a ramp, we'd need an elevator, and we would need handicap-accessible bathrooms. So at that point, again, when we accept the accelerated repair, we move into that feasibility study, and at that, the city would have to make that decision as to whether or not they want to enter into that other side, which is 100% cost to them. The 80/20 split is completely on the accelerated repair, which is door, windows, boilers and roofs. That is all covered under that 80/20 city split, which is, which is probably in itself going to be about $5, $5.5 million, of which the city will be on the hook for $1 million worth of repairs there, more or less. On the ADA side, you could be looking at $3 million worth of repairs, and that's all city. So the project's going to be, in my opinion, between an $8 and $10 million project, of which the city will bore the cost of $5 million, more or less, at the end of this. But, but again, you're not, there's no obligation to the city until we get into the, into the mix, and then from that point forward, the city would have to make that decision as to whether or not they wanted to make this investment in moving this project forward.
All right, questions?
The statement of interest is due when on this one?
This one is due February 15th.
And when would we, when would you be looking to, if we were in a pipeline? That one's much quicker than the core, so how quickly do you think?
This one, yeah, so this one, we're going to know in April. More or less, April or May, we'll have an answer as to whether or not we move forward. There's a short period of time that we have to accept that feasibility study, next, next move. The architect and engineer are supplied by, I'm sorry, the OPM and the designer are supplied by MSBA, are dying, but they pick them out, we don't get to choose. So though, they're already on board, they've already been procured, they're ready to go. That group would start probably October, September, October. So the city would have to come up with the feasibility study. So on a $4 million project, we're probably talking about feasibility on these, maybe 400,000, 300,000, the city would have to come up with, of which 20% is their cost, and we get 80% back. Once we do that piece, then the city would have to fund, go into a full funding agreement, and at that point, the feasibility study is going to flush out any kind of ADA requirements. So that elevator will be flushed out, all of those items will be flushed out, and then the cost of anything else that we were doing that, any kind of electrical upgrade. Automatically, when you put in elevators, our systems are not big. The square footage in that building is going to require fire suppression, and then our enunciator and our full fire system, which is small money in a building that small, a lot different than some of our other items. But all of that will be put together in a package, and then the city will need to, whether or not they want to accept that number at the end. And then we sign the agreement and move forward. Now, as we did with Watson, I don't think that the city needs to take on the whole thing at one time, so MSBA allowed us, going through the process of getting a waiver, a two-year waiver, of doing the ADA stuff until one part was done, which is what we're doing at Watson. As soon as we finish the roof, windows and boilers, actually, we won't be finished, we'll be halfway through it, we're going to start the next process. So we would do the same thing here, look for that waiver to allow us to breathe a little bit in between, allow the city to spread out their borrowing, the start of borrowing, all that short-term bans, to get that done early and not wait until-
Have we talked to the city about this project?
I haven't talked to them about either project, because it was my-
Well, ask them, right. So we don't, for the statement of interest, we don't need to, there's no financial obligation.
The council has to vote on it. So the mayor would still have to refer it.
So we would-
Yeah, but we could have the conversation.
Right, right. My concern is that the debt on the new high school is going to be coming on board in the next-
Year and a half.
Year and a half. And so we haven't even started paying that yet, and we're going to ask for potentially a million for the accelerated repair, and then at some point in the next year or so after that, potentially another $3 million for ADA that goes down there. I just, then how many suits do you have to spin putting at the Wiley?
It can only serve one class of kids per-
Right.
So one times, the largest it could serve is one times, you know, 26. The smallest, if it was a stone option, would be, I think it's some eight times-
About 126, six classes, 20-something?
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I like the idea of having that availability. I just, there's a lot of work going on in our buildings all at once, and I just want to make sure that these conversations are being had with the city in terms of, you know, I don't want to go through this process where we're taking votes to, you know, authorize statements of interest and so on, and then have it unravel on us because we don't have the funding. And I guess that's always what any project could happen-
Right.
-once it comes to picking up the tap for a feasibility study, but, you know, I just want to make sure that we're having these conversations, they don't feel as though we're sending this stuff down there to them.
Right.
It'd be nice for their purposes, too, for planning, when you talk about spreading out the borrowing and the bonding, what does that look like for the city? What are the things the city needs that are in the pipeline for bonding? Where does this fit in? Can we do one? Can we do both? Can we do neither?
Right.
You know, that, so if we can have this conversation, you know, I'd really appreciate that piece of it.
We wanted to have it with you first, just because, out of protocol, respect, state of state, we would include in the budget presentation, Monday, as we did last year, out on the horizon, what are the capital needs of the district? We would articulate that, and that is the start of us publicly talking about things that are on the horizon.
Because I'm sure we've got buildings right now that need work, ones we actually occupy.
Once you actually took action on last year, we're going to talk about next.
That's what I'm talking about. We have buildings that people are occupying now that we have needs, and not, never mind buildings we don't occupy, that we want to invest money in, so-
We're almost, we're almost done. Ken's done, and the last, that's what the last part of tonight's meeting is. You'll see all the work that we've done and all these things.
No, no, we definitely have, I'm just saying.
Watson's the last.
Preference for me would be, make sure that we get the buildings we have currently, you know, in a good place, maintenance-wise, and make sure that they're up to, up to the standards.
The document, the document that I have to, if I could, the document that I have to produce for the Wiley is much smaller than the document that I got to produce for the core project, for the Stone Building. So the committee is going to, if the, if you guys so choose, the committee is going to look at that on Monday. If I could, I mean, I wouldn't have an issue presenting this to the administration ahead of time, so that nobody wastes their time, as a feasibility thing, throwing it out there and then, rather than moving forward, because the 15th is the only date I'm worried about. That's the core, this project.
Yeah.
The other one, I've got a little more time to, you know, to present, but-
Yeah, I just want to make sure they're on board with it. If it's a hard no from them that we just don't have the capacity within our bonding schedule-
Mm-hmm.
-to do these jobs, then, I mean, we can talk about it, we can plan for it, you can do the statement of interest. At the end of the day, it's not going to go anywhere, because they're going to meet the obligation. This report that you gave us, is that the one that was done several years back, or is this a new one?
This is brand-new.
So we had one on the shelf somewhere, we paid for-
It's still, yeah, this is, this is specific to the work that we've done, basically, since that report. So that, the document that you have tonight starts in the, in the fall of '16, and it's yearly-
Because I can't imagine the building's gotten any better since the first report we did.
Our two, well, our other buildings have.
Our others have, I'm talking about this one-
These two have not, no.
Because it hasn't been occupied.
These two are not, so these are not included in-
The windows are probably still broken?
Yes.
The issues we had with the envelope and the brick, it's probably still an issue about more now, because now with four years, you know, further along into this, that's why I was asking if that was that report, if it's been reassessed.
So that, that report, still, two years left on it, we're working through all of the bullet items that were in that report, and we're, I bet we're about 50% into that.
We're talking about the same report? There was a report done specifically for the Wiley.
For the Collins.
Wiley.
Oh, the Wiley, that's what you have here tonight. This one here is the Wiley.
So this one's the one that come back on, right.
That original one was done for the Wiley, yes, that's here.
Correct. We hired, I believe it was-
It was Figurito. It was Mount Vernon.
No, Mount Vernon, that's correct.
Right.
Mount Vernon did a study for, we paid for, on the Wiley years ago.
And if you look at their number on the bottom-
That's, that's, this is Mount Vernon's?
That's Mount Vernon's number, yes.
And that, this one goes back to 2014?
2012?
Oh, 14, 14.
14?
The bottom, yes, it's cost escalation to 14.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The 14. So, all right, so that answered my question on that one, because I want to make sure in terms of-
Exactly. I thought you were talking about the Collins.
Estimates back then to estimates now, obviously, the price of materials go up, labor costs go up. If this is ballpark, we're looking at now, or are we looking at, obviously, the issue of inflation over the years? The last question I have is, did the school committee, and I can't remember, because we've did it so many times, unfortunately, did we turn the city back over to the building back over to the city?
No, these were the only, so the only two that weren't turned back over-
These two.
-was Stone and-
Wiley.
Because Stone was occupied.
Right. Well, that's why we didn't.
And Wiley.
What was the, so my understanding of educational facilities are that they belong to the school apartment-
Until we turn them back.
Until they're no longer used for educational purposes-
Exactly.
-by statute or by CMR, whatever it is. Then if they're not being occupied for educational purposes, they have to revert back to the city. We have to take a vote to send them back.
Right.
We never did that on this one, though?
No.
Okay.
We didn't.
All right, I just want to make sure it went down the road.
And we were using it for storage, and that's probably the reason why it didn't go over.
And the other part of that is, once they stop using for educational purposes, everything that you do, if you want to reuse them, then has to follow the modern-
Yeah.
-guidelines.
You have one year. You have one year from a shutdown to reoccupy.
Right.
And if you don't reoccupy within the one year, then you are now more pre-existing, non-performing.
ADA compliance, you got to start fresh, like it's like a new project, so.
Yes.
Okay, with that, you.
I mean, I think Vice Chairman covered pretty much all of it, but, Mr. Superintendent, you mentioned before Kenny spoke regarding the grades, like grade four, three, two, 12, possibly. What, what's the thinking?
It's in terms of use.
Yeah.
It's a one-unit school. It could be used as another elementary school on the north side where we have space issues.
Similar to.
It could be used as an early childhood center on the north side. It could also be used as Stone continues to expand as the elementary part of Stone.
But that's our pride, that's our flexibility with it.
Well, that with, yes, because all this program will do is, it doesn't fix the inside, it can fix the exterior, plus the systems. So then we would decide, you know, the configuration, but as I said, zero to, not zero, kindergarten through grade five in terms of the bathroom size and the doors and hallways and all that stuff, doesn't make sense to high school.
Okay. And what Vice Chairman Costa asked you Kenny regarding the buildings and the broken windows and whatnot, are they, are they now secure?
So the buildings are secure, right. So every time we get a broken window, we have people go there once a week. They, they circle the buildings. We get a broken window, we board it up or we repair it if it's a window that we can repair in-house. If it's not, we board that, that particular one. We have four boarded up at Stone, and I think we have two boarded up at Wiley.
Okay.
But they are, they are maintained. We have electricity in both, those buildings are live, they don't, they're not heated, but they are both, have electricity and the alarms work.
Thank you.
They're able to refer?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to refer the accelerated repair program at Wiley schools with full body.
I'll second it. I just read in my comment, if we can bring the city on board with this, if you can have some information from them as to, you know, where they see this project lined up with other means throughout the district, and I think it'll help better position, you know, in terms of prioritizing this project over the other projects, or whatever other work we need to do, that we need their assistance with, so. How you?
The made by Mr. Hopps, second by Mr. Costa.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hopps?
Yes.
Mr. Headsoe?
Yes.
All right, next discussion item, Sylvia's school traffic issue.
Great conversation point follow-up from much conversation involving members of the committee and my team over the last couple of years. Tonight, we're here to give you an update as to where we are. I was out there this morning. I know this is a tough, difficult situation, but we'll share with you right now where we are based on what was approved last year for us to look at this issue.
So we, we've gone one step with most schools, the Henry Lloyd, the Sylvia and the Talbot, on the initial request to take a look at traffic and take a look at drainage and, and other issues at Talbot. So the Sylvia school of, of the two requests for traffic relief is the most difficult one due to the fact that the front of the property is wet. So we only have the outlet, we only can go out to west, to Meridian. And, you know, it's a single lane, two, two, two-direction, single-lane road that we're dumping out into. And currently, we're, we're coming in and out of a narrow road with two sets of traffic in and out. We, we get locked into our own circle, our own traffic pattern inside, and, and then we have to deal with the crossover on Meridian when people are trying to make the turn, whichever direction they are. We've, we've had, at times, we've had a detail, a police detail, we've tried our, our own security, we've had SROs here, a variety of different combinations, and they all make it a little better, but they're not solving any kind of problem. So the thought was that we were gonna try and provide relief inside the building and make that entrance a one-way in and a second entrance a one-way out. If you look at the first drawing with the Sylvia, you have that circle around the elementary area, the roundabout, yes, right at, right at the beginning. Yep. One more. There you go, right, right after that page.
Thank you.
So that circle, that roundabout in the kindergarten area, and that is the area where we have the least amount of wetlands. So we would, we would have a bridge, there'd be a bridge over some of the wetlands. There would be an area where we would have to replicate land. So whatever wetlands we take, we need to replicate that somewhere else on our property, which would mean that we may be taking retention ponds and making them larger, we may be digging another retention pond somewhere else on the property to replicate that land, we may be doing plantings of species within that wetlands that we have to replicate. That's the, the part of, of the big lift. The permitting process for Sylvia alone is about a hundred thousand dollars, and that would be to get through all of our filings with DEP in order to disturb wetlands. That road would, wouldn't run out if you take a close look on the, on the Meridian side of that, on the Meridian Street, there's a small area that's cut out where the pump station is, where the surge pump station is. We would be coming out just on the side of that pump station with the road. And that road would, would kinda slightly go straight back and then bend to the right and then hit the traffic circle, and that would be our way out. It would have a gate that we would open on Meridian, so it wouldn't be used other than at the beginning of school and at the end of school. And, and neither, obviously, it would be locked on both sides, so we'd prevent anybody from getting to that road. The traffic pattern from there would have to be discussed both with the bus companies and with the administration as to their let-out points in the school and how best we could route traffic. The guess would be they come down, they come around the first, the second loop, come by the front of the building, hit the second, the roundabout, and then head out with their student in hand.
I'm sorry Kenny, I'm just trying to follow that. Can you?
Sure, sure. So, so the roundabout.
I got this, yeah.
Coming this way. The way they go in now, the same way now.
Exactly.
They're gonna come in here and, no, they actually.
No, I know, but this is the back of the gym.
Yes.
Here's the front.
So what happens now is they come in this way.
Yep.
And they go around the front of the building and stop.
Yep.
What Mr. Pacheco's saying is that they're gonna keep going around, take a right into the roundabout, and then they'll be leaving this way.
Right here.
Right out.
That's all I wanted to know, okay.
So the, so the main road heading in, which is the city street, that road is, is here one-way.
Okay.
Just only into the project. And it would be a one-way for morning drop-off.
Right.
You know, and end of day. And if that became a confusing problem, then we would make it a one-way all the time and we would leave that gate open. The issue would be it would be closed up at night when our custodians leave. This process, this could be as long as two years. It could take us a year just for permitting to get through that, and then the, the other, the next year for construction. That project, as I listed in the front, Sylvia design and permitting, a hundred, a hundred and twenty. The wetland replication, I don't have a number on, cause we have not gone that far with the design group. And then the road and bridge construction, again, my, my best guess is it's a half a million dollars worth of construction and permitting to, to make that second road in and out of here. Now, the only other thought of all of this was to widen the city street to give us a little more freedom of movement, but the problem with that is it doesn't do us any good with the actual problem of once we get to the end of the road and we dump into Meridian Street, we're right back where we started. But that is a possibility that the city street could be widened to make it two lanes each way. Right.
Right, so on the way coming, on the way out, you got two lanes now.
Right.
One goes right, one goes left. So the people wanna go right and just go, right?
So that's an option. I'm gonna say that would require the planning department to get involved, because it is a city street, city-controlled. And then we would be able to, so traffic studies, the engineering side of that, what it would actually do with the traffic. We would, we may have to open up the mouth at the bottom a little bit bigger to, to allow those, those two lanes to exist, but that is another option. And I would suggest that before we start the permitting process on the other side, that we look at this option with a traffic study, both on Meridian and on our street, and then the, the obvious, the outcome of what a second lane would do for us getting traffic out of, out of that property.
So the first one you answered only was the construction timeline, so about two years. I guess the only other question I have is with the price tag of potentially five hundred thousand, is, is there any other funds available in any of the existing accounts for school construction?
There may be some funds available in the Morton project. The last time we had checked, I think there was a couple of hundred thousand, might be, might be as much as three hundred thousand, but I'm, I'm gonna guess that there's at least two hundred thousand in that account, which could be reallocated. So what, what those funds have to be is, is reallocated for a different project, because the bonding is specific to, to Morton. And it could be used for.
Would that qualify?
Traffic, well, it would qualify for the permitting.
Right.
Absolutely.
I, I only raise that because, I mean, we have great use of the funds that we already have borrowed for, that we have, and it's, it's gotta be used for a specific purpose. So, I mean, the traffic up at Sylvia has been a nightmare since the building was built.
Right.
And so any parent who's ever had to come in and out of there, whether it's for school, school events, soccer up there with, falling in soccer, it's just, it's, it's always been, and, and for, for very obvious reasons, you're taking all those, all that traffic, putting them in one entrance, looping them around, and then they pan back, back out into Meridian Street, which is already a pretty congested street to begin with, in terms of, of houses on there. So, yeah, I say the sooner the better. I mean, I know it's a process, it's gonna take a while, but can you feel comfortable that whatever we disturb in wetlands, we have sufficient.
We've got a lot of land.
Land on our property to replicate that without having to cut into big, you know, softball field over there, baseball, softball.
Yeah, that land is too high, so, so our replication's gonna be hopefully extensions. There are four, if not five, retention ponds on the property already.
And where are those located?
One is right next to the entrance.
Okay, to the left, we're just behind where our sign is now.
Exactly, exactly. And then there's smaller ones in between, there's one out in the back, and there's one on the side of the road towards the end.
Okay.
The ones that are really active, you can still spot with these aerial photos, the ones that are not active, overgrown, basically, the retention is so little that it's disappeared and it's overgrown.
Right.
But the outfalls are always checked yearly to make sure that we can get the water out of that property. Okay.
Well, are you?
Yeah, so Kenny, so what Vice Chairman Costa was talking about as far as the wetlands and the replication of that, that's a hundred thousand dollars permitting's gonna take care of that.
So permitting, no, so what's gonna happen is the permitting is the first piece, that's paperwork.
Okay.
Paperwork and design, that's got no construction whatsoever into it.
Okay.
Second half.
So that's the first step.
Right, that's the first step of us getting through all of that. And that's basically all of the, all of the designs and all of the, the process, that the, the volumes of paper that are gonna be traveling between different environmental groups in order to get this piece started. After that, they will develop a cost with the schematic design, and then it goes into full design. And that's, that's why I have the question marks there, because I have no idea the cost of replication depending on, on where, where it is on the property, or I don't have any idea on, on the actual road construction and the length of the bridge that we're gonna be building. Even if we, even if we put piers, if that bridge is freestanding and it's touching on both sides, I don't have a footprint in the wetlands, I'm not sure that's possible.
Yeah. And I know that's kinda getting ahead of ourselves, but that was kinda my next question, potentially, how long, and what's the space from this roundabout to Meridian, what, how long and length?
Um, that's, uh.
I didn't see, see that.
I, I don't have the footage, but I'm being told it could be two hundred, two fifty.
Two fifty. And that's gonna be, the bridge is gonna be potentially anyway, start from the roundabout to Meridian Street?
No, no, it's only a shorter distance.
Oh, okay.
So let's say the bridge may be fifty foot, it could be two bridges.
Okay.
So that we wouldn't be trying to do a big span.
Okay.
So it could be a bridge of fifty and another bridge of fifty, it could be, it could be one hundred foot bridge. I'm not positive, because when, depending on the season and when they take these measurements as to when we could disturb wetlands. So it's gonna be a difficult thing to put our finger on until the engineering is done.
And you mentioned your possible other, looking at other different things, like expanding Meridian Street. Didn't they just finish up a?
No, it would be expanding the side road.
The side road.
So the, the original, the, the entrance going into, into Sylvia.
That's who you're talking about.
That entrance, that's a city street.
Okay. No, I know you just did that, I just thought, maybe I just heard you wrong.
Yeah, no, no, Meridian is okay, it's, well, it would've been nice if it was wider, but it's not.
All right.
But so for, for our purposes, if we could expand that other street, that may be a possibility. And I would, I would say that if we wanted, and I can get a price on, on short money for doing the traffic study on both pieces, and whether or not that would alleviate our issue in a more economical way. My guess is that widening that road could run us a hundred, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, a hundred and fifty thousand. And if it's gonna do the job, that's one thing, I'm not sure it will, so.
Well, okay, I mean, I'm, I'm gonna yield to Mr. Chairman, but, you know, having been, having gone to Sylvia School Coaching, my kids, and in the leagues there, they, it's definitely needed, so hopefully we can get it done like Vice Chairman Costa said, as soon as possible. But, all right, thank you.
All right, a few questions. The, we, didn't we allocate some funds to do a study here already? Did that actually?
We did, so that's, that's part of this already, yeah. So we, we allocated seventy-five thousand to be spread out with the three schools.
Right.
And that, that work has already been done, which is why we came up with this original. So we flagged it, we, we walked through this property.
Yep.
And we developed, at that point is when they said that the amount of wetlands that we're going to be crossing reaches the point of this extensive filing, which is why this work is stopped here, because I can't move into the next phase with the amount of money we allocate. We basically took the seventy-five and divvied it up with the three projects for drainage.
Right. So that was planning.
Yes.
So the two, so my kids go to Sylvia. I've been, my older two kids went to Sylvia. I know what it's like to drive over there to get in and get out of Sylvia. So getting into learning curve every year, takes about two weeks for all the parents to figure out how they're gonna drop their kids off and keep getting out of there. That's the only way that happens. So in the morning, you wait twenty minutes to get in if you don't plan well. And at the end of the day, you wait twenty, twenty-five minutes to leave. Once, if you're in that parking lot, you pick your kid up, you wait twenty-five minutes to leave. Now, I think two lanes out is gonna drastically reduce leaving time at the end of the day. I'm not sure the two lanes out's gonna help us getting in there. It, it'll have some effect, cause we'll be able to leave faster, so you won't, so, and I think it'll help. And that seems like the cheaper option, is that, I think if you widen that road going in, if it didn't have the impact, we might be able to then look at that wetland project. Cause I think doing both would be even better than just doing one, right? Right, that would be, that would help even more, right?
So, so if you made it four lanes, two in and two out, then you might be able to correct both times of the day.
The, the issue is, when they come in, not too many people go to the parking lot. Maybe they would, maybe more of them would if they were two lanes in, I'm not sure. So, I mean, that, that's, I guess, another option, that could be option number three. And maybe option four is doing both at some point in the future, once we understand how this is gonna happen. I would be curious to see, I, I thought, to the superintendent earlier, what a drone would see flying over this school in the morning and in the afternoon, what it really looks like. And you could really see the cars backed up, it seems like the northern part on Meridian Street, the cars coming from the north, they're backed up further than the cars coming in from the south, probably because the population comes from the north more. And again, those are the people waiting twenty minutes to get in there. So I definitely want to do something with this project, I think we all do, this committee has forever, wanted to do something about it. So are you going to have the traffic study done?
What I, what I'd like to do moving forward is have the traffic study done. What I, what I'd like to do, moving forward, is have the traffic study done, I can ask for a drone, you know, from that company, I mean, it's, it's not gonna hurt us, it's more information.
No, anyway.
You know, and we would be able to see that pattern in the morning, and, and the traffic count will give us which side, north or south, that, that most cars are coming into this property. It'll also give us the turn, again, everybody turning right, turning left over here, all of that stuff will be documented in the traffic study. What the drone's gonna show you is what people are doing in the property.
Right.
You know, and that's
And what's the circulation, with the clogs, where things are binding up?
And I don't think that that's a, that's a high, um, ticket item, I don't think that's, that's a heavy dollar, heavy lift for us, I think, uh, for small money, we can do that piece. To be totally honest, they're probably gonna want that as part of the, um, wetlands permitting process anyway, so we would need to do it, so for small money, we could probably do that piece anyway. And then, run it through, you know, the second step, and as you said, I mean, maybe we do it concurrently, so if you, if, if as we're doing that traffic study, if we find out that, they're telling us, there's no way, you can put four lanes, six lanes here, this is not gonna do anything, you may wanna try the other piece, you may wanna go the other route, then we would obviously do the other route. I, I, I think under normal circumstances, summer, soccer, other things going on on that property, the lanes will help, can't hurt.
I think the two lanes out's a great idea, I think you're gonna have an impact right away, in that.
Um, but I, I think that it, we're speculating if we don't do the traffic study, um, and give us a, a benchmark.
So, do you need this committee to refer anything in order for you to get the traffic study done?
If you would refer this, um, to allow that, that expenditure.
Right.
I would have to come back to you anyway for We would be putting it, it's gonna be part of Monday night, so if you refer it, we'll get it on the agenda for maybe March, after we've already said we wanna go to the next round. We're recommending that we do, that we
Do the study, we wanna recommend the traffic study.
At least, yeah.
Right. Yeah, I have, I have a yield for that.
Oh, no, I didn't know if you had something else, or was?
Yeah, well, one other thing I wanted to add, right now, coming in, there's not much you can do, right? Nobody at the street would help, but I'll tell you, at the end of the day, what has helped in the past is knowledgeable people, and I say knowledgeable, because you can't just put anybody at the street level to understand how to leave this parking lot. What they would do was stop the flow of traffic on Meridian Street and allow forty cars to come out of the parking lot at the end of the day, and then dump them onto Meridian, and then you let Meridian go for a minute, and let the cars fill in again, and then let them out, and it seemed to have, it seemed to be helpful. So I don't know if that's something too, as a temporary option, to help these parents out, it's kinda frustrating at the end of the day. In, in the morning, there's not much you can do now. Uh, you know, you see, you see a bunch of teachers out there in the morning, Mr. Lenz is out there too, and they're directing people in and out, cause there's still people that show up, you know, hasn't dropped the kid off yet, they're still stopping where they're not supposed to stop. Get out of the car, help the kid, and then, there's a, once you, once you go to this school and you live it, you know that your kid's ready to get out of the car as soon as you pull up in front of the school, it's like, see you later, bye. The door shuts and you gotta keep moving, all right? Everybody's like, right. So, that's something else I'd like you to consider if you could, Mr. Superintendent.
What we could do with that, the last thing we would need is every, a new face every day, so if we did a detail, I don't think it works.
No.
But if we did an SRO, and we, it was on an overtime situation from another school, so, one of our middle schools lets out early enough, we can have an SRO go over there, direct traffic, something like that, it would be the same body every day.
So, I like the idea that has to be the same person, cause if they don't understand the situation, they could make it worse. And then, my other concern was, at one point during my many years, someone tried to tell me I couldn't go left when I got out of there, and that made me mad, because I'm, I have my nephews with me, and they live on Meridian Street, beginning of Meridian. And I know that I could take a right and turn around, and that's what I had to do that day, but I think with the two lanes coming out now, you don't even have to worry about that, right? You don't even have to think about that anymore, so, to, to help move that idea along, but, with that idea, Mr. Costa.
One question, well, two questions. First one was, do you have money in your contracted services? Line, line item?
I'm not sure, I think I may, I, there's a couple of items that we're running hot on, um, but
I'm just saying, if you do, then
You mean as far as the, um,
For the, for the initial, for the initial traffic study, then it would need to get referred, if you have it within your operating budget now.
I can check on that, I can check on that.
You, you already have approval for that, for that line item, so, um,
Okay.
The other question that I had, um, I can't remember what it was, but
It was about someone after school, dismissal. Does the security gotta work, does it have to be a car?
That's what it was.
On the street, no.
That's what it was.
Security doesn't
So if you hire SRO overtime, you can give that overtime to the same SRO every day?
I can give it to a SRO, S-
Right, so it's not gonna be the same face, though?
No, but it could be, so I could say it's Visage of Fatale.
No, no, I didn't stand it.
Cause she's the sergeant of that, so she wouldn't have a specific retirement, yeah, I'm not positive.
When we're talking about having the same face there every day, you say you have to hire overtime from a SRO, I'm just thinking, I don't know, you can select one SRO to give them all that overtime every day, is the rest of them all gonna say?
So for instance, we do it at the school. Yeah, what they, yeah, you're right. What they do is school-specific, so Durfee, the SROs at Durfee usually get all the overtime at Durfee. Same thing with CUS, now you have some schools that don't have any afternoon activities, now they're the ones that get these projects.
So it wouldn't be the same person as
No, it would, it would probably, instead of having
Could be three or four.
Eight different, it could, right, it would be a smaller group.
It'll be less, but it won't be the same. When you were saying that, I'm thinking in my head,
Yeah.
I don't know that they would allow for the same person to be
The idea would be such as, a, a small group like four, four.
So if we had three or four of them, whose schools didn't have an activity in the afternoon, they'd rotate through there, someone would be there.
And basically, what would happen is, is once, so I mentioned Sarge of Fatale, she would basically be there with the first person who does it, and this is how it's gonna be done from this point forward, and then she would be there when the next new person comes, until they've all been trained, and then they're on a rotating basis, and now we don't have to worry about it, so, um, it might be something we can do short term.
So, I was just gonna ask that, is that something we could try for a week, see if that helps anything out, I mean?
We could plan it and do it, uh, we could start the week after school vacation, I'll set it up with, um, Sarge of Fatale to have a look at it.
From my experience, all they have to do is stop Meridian Street, let a whole bunch of cars out, and then let, don't try to do anything, if they try to do more than that, they could make it worse, right? So hopefully, you know, and I'm sure they'll
Isn't stopping Meridian though hard?
Is what?
Isn't it hard though?
What, what is what hard?
Stopping Meridian, I mean, cars go
Oh, stopping them?
Forty miles an hour.
Not at that time of day when there's cars blocking on both sides of the street, and the school flights are flashing, so.
Oh, yeah, all right.
No, I, I mean, I don't, I don't even know, I mean, as far as the traffic at that time of the day, it's, it can't be that heavy.
What if it was just a straight-up
For the neighbors coming
Right, no, there, there, there's some businesses getting out, I'm sure.
Yeah.
But if they're smart enough at this point, it's
If they don't go there, not go down there, yeah.
So, do we need to refer this, or do we think we have this covered, something we can handle without referring it?
What's the total cost? The only thing I would say is, I can't, I can't move forward with the, um, permitting process, that hundred thousand dollar piece, without a, without a committee approval, I can move forward with the, yeah.
Motion made by the Traffic Initiative.
Second it.
Funding and any studies relative to this Sylvia project, as presented to the full committee.
Motion made by Mr. Costa, second on Mr. Hart, will call.
Yes.
Mr. Costa? Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetsaw?
Yes, all right. Next discussion item, Henry Lord, traffic issue.
So, Henry Lord, we've gone a little further, a little less issues on wetlands, and the drawing, um, the actual design drawing, initial design drawing will show you, um, what the plan is there. So, this drawing here would show the current parking lot, the end of the current parking lot, if you take a look at this one, once you take it out of the book, you So those parking, this is the very end of the side parking lot along the football field. The road would start at that point and would follow the, the football field right out to Mariano Bishop Boulevard. There's a wetlands area, as you can see, it's marked, that we would cross, um, again, if you look, there's some areas that we swaled, so, right around this area here, up top, we swaled, and we also have another area over here, um, that would be able to pick up anything, any, uh, water issues that we have currently over here. It's a smaller, um, amount of wetlands, we filed, uh, notice of intent already with, um, DEPA and DEP, um, we have, uh, design work, a notice of design work already filed also, we have two documents that have already been submitted on behalf of this project, and the cost on this project, um, is, um, fifteen thousand dollars to produce the construction documents to move forward, once we get the approvals from DEP, and a hundred fifty thousand dollars to pave the road, and put all that parking in. So all of this is additional parking, and basically, we'd use this parking, obviously, for field use, um, but it also could be used for Henry Lord functions. Again, another gated situation, so we would have a gate at the end of the road here, it's a one-way out only, no entrance from Meri, uh, from Mariano Bishop Boulevard, one-way out only, and there would be a gate that would be closed, um, off hours. The, uh, the traffic study that we will do with this one here, um, we're gonna do it in conjunction with the engineering department, will be to be sure that, um, we don't need a traffic signal. And if there was a traffic signal that would be put here, it would be, obviously, green on thoroughfare, and on our side street would strictly be on demand. So, we'd have, um, sensors in, in, in ground, in the property, and when the traffic would build up to three or four cars, it would change the light, and allow that to turn green for us and stop Mariano Bishop Boulevard. I'm not quite sure at that time of the day, um, the capacity on, on Mariano Bishop Boulevard, but that would be whether or not, uh, the traffic study would show that we would need to go that way, that would, that is not included, the traffic light is not included in the, um, in the price for design and construction. One, one side note on this, the, an eighth grade class, Princeton, um, at Henry Lord has taken this on as a civic project, as a class project. I was at that class on Monday or Tuesday, um, they are very enthusiastic, Princeton, that's the, every class is named.
Yeah.
Um, so Princeton, that group, it's sixteen students in that class, they've taken this on as their project, and they are, I gave them the documents that you have, and, and copies of, of all of the filings and everything, so they've, um, taken, um, they're running with, uh, to the, to the project, and, um, they wanna do a survey for parents, and they wanna do a survey for the public, to see what they think about the idea, so.
Mr. Costa? I'll name it Princeton Street. To that point, though, is it, so are we gated for school use only, or is that gonna be a pass-through for a public, so that won't be a public road?
No, it's not a public road.
That'll simply be an access out of that, out of the lot.
Right.
Here, in our, is that the west, western part of the parking lot?
Exactly.
And it'll just head back out into Meridian.
And then it'll have, right, and then it'll have their, their parking, so you'll have, I don't know if there's forty parking places, additional parking places, so people who are going to watch Papa Warner Football, especially off, in colder season there, they can sit in their cars and watch as opposed to
Yeah, that would be my only concern, that if that was an access road for public, then you'd have cars coming through the neighborhood there, where the nursing home is, through the back of our lot, so that is gated off.
It's always gated off in our property.
Only over during school, school hours.
And, um, and, and two reasons for that, obviously, security is one, but the second one is, um, the road, the road will not be constructed to highway spec like city streets are. You know, it will be a, it will be a road that we'll be using for ex, for exits, but it will not be that grade of road that's traveled on every single day by the amount of cars that it takes to, um, to qualify for a city street, so.
And then the clearing of that road in the wintertime, will have sufficient resources to
Would be us, yes, yes.
Go down there and plow that out.
Absolutely. We already do sidewalk all the way around the property on Ameri, Mariano Bishop Boulevard in the winter, we take it all the way out till the sidewalk ends, um, so, I, I'm, I'm saying at some point, I don't know what kind of development is gonna go on, I don't think there's much more left, um, Mariano Bishop Boulevard is sooner or later gonna be up for repairs, and we will obviously be lobbying for sidewalks on both sides, and maybe at that point, we would want a traffic signal here with a crossing, uh, with crossing ability.
And that dock, strip there, that's a asphalt sidewalk?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Just wanna make sure that if we had students walking, that they're not gonna be walking down.
They're not gonna walk in, right, exactly.
Are you?
Mr. Hart? One question, is the Chico Olivia Gate on the other side too?
Yes, stop people from getting in there.
Parking there and they're having to back out one way.
Exactly.
Okay.
Motion to refer. I'm gonna second it, Mr. Costa, second on Mr. Hart, will call.
Mr. Costa?
Yeah.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetsaw?
Yes. Chairman Mayor, just as a point of information, should these be being referred to the Committee on Finance? Or the Committee as a whole?
Well, the Finance is a Committee as a whole, so we can go on either agenda.
Right, it's financial in nature, so I'm wondering if this should go out of Finance or?
The only issue would be, do you have a Finance meeting? From my standpoint, do you have a Finance meeting scheduled for this month?
For February?
We're gonna have a bunch at some point for the, but I don't know if they're gonna be in February.
I don't even know that these are going for February, cause I think I
What do we need for a vote in February? We only need Wiley.
We've got a robust agenda already.
Do we need a vote on, do we need a vote on Wiley in February? I need, I need a, I need a vote because of the SOI.
SOI, for Wiley.
But we need a, process question, not, not pushing back. In order to submit an SOI of the whole committee?
Yep, you need a vote of the whole committee to make any official action.
Is, is this on the agenda for Monday night?
Yes.
Okay, this is, the Wiley.
It's already been
Okay, and a few of the other items in here.
Whatever's time-sensitive.
All right, yeah, a few of the other ones.
Not these.
The transportation ones, just the Wiley and the transportation.
Yeah, not, not the Sylvia.
Not the Sylvia.
We're covered on that, or Talbot, none of those.
Who's that, who's that?
No.
I, I trust you.
I anticipated it.
Nothing else.
All right, our next item, Talbot, drainage issue.
Sure, so, um, on the front, I'll go over the numbers first, so seventy-five thousand is Talbot with drainage documents and construction, and if you look at the photo from Talbot, if you, if you look at the strip of cars that are parked along the woods, the wooded area, just above that wooded area is where we have a lot of, um, of overflow, basically, coming down the hill, off the ledge, um, Monarch, Bark, and
East or west?
Um, on, on this picture would be west, so from, from, yeah, so those, all the way along there, there's ledge, and that, that hill goes up pretty quick from there, but there's an awful lot of water that flows, and that's part of our flooding. So, at the, at the end of, uh, in front of the cars, we, um, would put a swale that would catch all of that water, and then, in the, in the northeast corner of our property, we have an outfall or a head wall that, um, takes the water from our property, takes it under twenty-four, ties it into the, uh, into the drainage, the city drainage. So, uh, that would be, uh, that would be looked at to see if it was adequate, and then catch basins along this swale would tie right into that, and alleviate this water problem that's coming from here, um, which has destroyed that parking on the side and a little bit in the back. That's the drainage side of this. There's a portion of drainage that's gonna be repaired on Melrose Street, that belongs to the city, and they'll be replacing that in conjunction with our project. Um, so we own everything inside the property line, and they would take care of that, um, lodger, and, and lodging the line in the, uh, on Melrose Street. That's the drainage side of this, and then the next side of it is the paving.
So, is the what?
Paving.
Of the parking lot.
And do we have that, those numbers here with us?
It's not, the paving side is, I may have put the paving side in.
You put the four hundred dollar?
Right, so that would be, that's, that's paving, sidewalks, curbs, everywhere.
Around Tybe.
Right. With the drainage? With the drainage, yeah.
Right, so
So this is a big project?
Yeah.
Questions? Can't do on our own.
No, I, I just wanted, um, just to, as, again, as I co, I coach my kids, and we go to Talbot, the park, I'm, I'm very happy to see that the parking lot's getting paved, it is very true, it needs work, so, that's all I want to say.
We want it, I mean, but this is gonna take us going to the city.
Right, so, for us, we're both to refer this to the full committee?
Yeah.
I have just a question.
Yes.
So, what was, what was the total number?
So, the number is seventy-five thousand for drainage documents and construction, four hundred thousand, it's four seventy-five total.
Four seventy-five?
Total.
Sidestill has an appropriation to make to the school apartment, doesn't it? One point eight, potentially, one point six million?
Yes, somewhere around there, maybe, but, but we also have some other things that we might be looking at, that unexpected needs.
Like? You beg, you beg me.
E, E L T, curriculum material rollout, some things that we're not able to do with the SOA, so, I mean, we're, you know, we're, we're not confident that we could fully cover this, is what I'm saying. Plus with the other expenses.
We'll be able to use that funding next year anyway.
Well, we could buy materials.
Like?
We could buy, well, we could roll out.
What I'm trying to say is that we got one point six million dollars coming to us, I don't know that we got one point six million dollars in needs for materials, I'm just suggesting this is a prod, project that's well, but
I, I wanna show the city that we're, we're gonna skin in the game, but I think, I think they need to help us a little bit.
Exactly, that's why.
And the second part of this, not on the price thing, but also the conversation, talking to the city, sometimes I think we forget that we have a untapped resource behind the Talbot, which could be a citywide benefit for the field.
Right. Absolutely. And I can appreciate showing the city, we have some skin in the game, and asking the city to get in, and get in behind it, but we have a lot of city projects going on right now, excuse me, school projects right now, that the city is assisting us with.
Yeah.
One in our backyard right here at the high school, it's a major one, so, I understand wanting the city to, to partner with us, but I also wanna caution that if we owe this type of money, we're gonna have to spend it.
Right.
We have these needs, that, yes, we wanna look to, for, for, you know, future needs that we may have coming up, but I also don't wanna be, you know, as
Greedy.
People will say, that guy.
Right, we're not gonna, right, we're not gonna be greedy, and I, I just think
I'm just saying that.
Right.
The city is, is got a chunk of money that they're gonna turn over, uh, hopefully, when that happens, again, I don't wanna be going back and saying, well, we're gonna have some skin in this game, but we also want you to pick up in bond X amount of dollars in addition to that, cause I can, I can, I can see, um, our CFO, Mr. Hadi, I can see your face now, as, as we're having this conversation. I just wanna make sure that we're being fair across the board, and that's all.
I mean, I think we're all on the same page, that we understand that we wanna pick up the lion's share of this to get it done, but there's some more conversations that
that we like to have with the city as they think about the entirety of the capital products, and we want to be partners with the city, we're not, I think, one of the great things about this school committee is that there is a really strong, good relationship with the city, and we work well as a team.
Well, it's taxpayer dollars, at the end of the day, I just want to make sure we're being fair and equitable across the board, and if we have the funding, you know, I, I don't want to be asking for additional funding when we're already getting, you know, a rather substantial amount of money that we could be using to assist to, to do these types of, of projects, I agree, to the extent that there's city buildings, there's school buildings, that, yeah, the city should have some, some say in it, and some peace in it, but the, the taxpayers of the city are carrying a big burden with the debt from the high school and other projects we've got going on, we're coming in with a statement of interest for Wiley, one for the Stone, I, I just think we're going to be asking them for, for large ticket items, and if this is a smaller one that we can absorb within some money, then maybe we look to, to get it done that way, and I think that builds more goodwill, but we are asking for a statement of interest money or the call project for Stone, that may give us a little more goodwill on their part than we took care of this, we're asking for more big picture stuff that they can bond for, that's all, I, I just raise it for that point. With that, are you?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's obvious from the satellite picture, this is long overdue, right, and you can see the deterioration in the satellite photo, not close, so, uh, in favor of moving it forward, is there a motion to refer this to the committee? Do we need to refer this to the committee?
Yeah.
All right, motion.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion to, uh, refer the, uh, Talbot drainage issue to the full pot.
All right. Motion to refer Mr. Hart, second to Mr. Costa, roll call please.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Next item, up for discussion, a vote to refer is the tentative agreement to special education van transportation.
So, um, this committee had asked me to take a look at, actually, the full committee to negotiate with Tremblies on the seventy special ed interpretation for a five-year contract. As we sat down with them, they were obviously very interested, and, um, we removed McKenney Vento out of this because that needs to be bid, thirty B, we can only negotiate special ed transportation, so, um, the school committee did not want to vote the yellow bus piece in because we did have other people bidding on that, however, this piece here, um, they were the sole bidder, um, last year on this particular, um, part of the proj- uh, part of the bid, so, um, we negotiated with them, and, um, towards the end of the document is, um, the anticipated savings, um, for each year of three hundred and eighty-eight thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight thousand, one hundred and sixty-four dollars and sixteen cents.
Over five years?
First, each year.
Each year.
Each year, three hundred thousand.
Questions?
No, that's almost four hundred thousand dollars in savings for the next five years, I mean, that's, it's good work. Um, uh, they provide a good service to us now, we're happy with them, I think locking them in for five years, you know, would be a good idea anyway, but it's certainly more appetizing, it's going to be three hundred and eighty thousand dollars, three hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars in savings. Again, this is the type of stuff that I'm talking about with the city in terms of goodwill, the city picks up transportation, right, so I think they were very happy to know that five-year, a five-year plan, um, will, will, close to two hundred thousand, um, excuse me, close to two million over, carry another zero, close to two million over, over the five years, so I'll make a motion to refer.
I'll second it, and on, on the second, Mr. Chairman, Kenny, is it usually a, uh, it's, it's a five-year contract, it's unique, right?
So, the unique, right, and, and the reason, um, the reason why we, we wanted to push the five-year is the city council approval, but the reason why we wanted to push the five-year was the fact that, um, the investment that we're asking bus companies to, to make, um, will allow them the extra years to recoup some of their dollars, so a three-year contract makes it a little tight, we've seen the cost of doing this particular thing in a one-year piece, and it costs us almost eight hundred thousand dollars extra, um, to turn it into a one-year contract, so, um, Tremblies had a, a major investment of, uh, twenty-seven buses that they bought for one-year contract, and we paid that price, so this will allow them to continue to upgrade their fleet so that we have the best, um, buses and, and service from them, but moving forward, um, with the five years, it obviously allows us that stability to, you know.
No, I, I mean, I think it's a great job, a great job when the savings is even better for us, so, uh, congra- you know, good job on that, Kenny, thank you. Are you?
All right. So, a, a couple of questions, so you mentioned that McKenney Vento is not in there now, was that in there, in their prior, the previous bid?
It was in their previous bid.
For the one year?
For the one year, yes.
For the one year, all right.
So what would happen is, um, and it's in the next item on the agenda, the McKenney Vento will be a separate, you can bid on the whole thing as we did before, you can bid on each particular section, so McKenney Vento is a separate section, um, because it's van transportation, so it's a separate section within the rest of that bidding process.
Right, so how much is that, the cost of McKenney Vento for the one year?
I don't have that number here, and I'm sorry.
Right, no, rough estimate, or, I don't need the exact, I'm just curious to know, because, you know, it was in there before, and I know that unfortunately, they didn't get that five-year contract.
Yeah, I want to say that the, the current contract is for, is either four million, we were eight hundred thousand from the five-year, so we went up eight hundred thousand, we might have came in at, um, five and change, right?
So it's about five.
Right, so.
The math.
So if you, yeah, so if you take out the, yeah.
The reduction's there.
The reduction is.
Now that it's out there.
So, again, we could, again, we could see the same kind of, not same dollars, but the same kind of percentage reduction in the McKenney Vento for a five-year contract, and depending on the winner of that bid, if they're able to tier within their own business, they may be able to save us even more, so.
Right. Mr. Costa?
Just real quick, I mean, I, I would expect it, and I'm thinking about it, that there would have been a, a savings, they purchased these vans right up front for year one.
Right.
So they've already made the investment.
Right.
And that's why it costs us eight hundred thousand dollars more, because they took that money, invested it in twenty-seven vehicles, they needed to do the contract for that year.
Right.
They have the vehicles now, so naturally, they're not in, you know, they're not in, in need of funding in order to purchase vehicles to get this job done for the next five years, they already have them.
Right.
So, so the cost now is basically just adjusted for any of their over, well, not any of their overhead, but it, it's for their drivers, insurance.
Wages.
Wages, inflation, those types of things, not including, obviously, vehicles, because we already purchased them for.
And the contract does have, um, does have a, an escalator, um, based on the, um, yeah, one and a half percent.
Okay. All right, but at the end of the day, it's a two million dollar savings over five years, so, uh, you know, I, I did the city council, because they'll have to approve it, right, five years?
Yes.
So I'm sure that they'll be, uh, they'll be pleased, I'm sure that, that, that we're coming to them with the savings and not making an increase, at least on this particular contract. Are you?
Uh, the district's expense for the Ride three sixty and ABL, which allows for the GPS, the, uh, the lifetime.
Yes.
So you know what our cost will be for that? We have to purchase that?
I don't, I don't, we haven't purchased it, and it would be a bid item, so we would be going out, um, to bid.
Right.
To, uh, provide that.
Also the monthly support charges, right?
So some of it, some of the stuff they're going to absorb, and some of it we're going to, um, we're going to absorb.
And now, is that, I've heard about some of the GPS software, is that the kind of software where parents could track as well?
So that's what this one is, this Ride three sixty allows the parents to pick this up on their phone, so if, if their bus is late, they can pick the bus up, it's either on the way or, right.
All right. All right. I believe a motion was made?
Yes, by Mr. Costa.
Mr. Costa, second to Mr. Hart, roll call please.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Next item for discussion is, and a vote to refer, the fiscal year twenty-one transportation item.
So, um, the IFB has been, um, upgraded, rewritten, um, it, this item, this particular document has highlighted areas, those are areas that have changed since the last document, so these are items that we took out for the one-year contract, and we're putting back in, like the GPS three sixty, um, one item, um, just make sure there's nothing in front here, it's, so if you turn to page nineteen, four point one-three, and four point one-four. So in the contract, we had, um, that no bus can be older than ten years old at the start of the, term of the contract, um, an optional piece of language would be, no bus would be older than five years at the start of the contract, and then could be no older than eight during the contract. And the reason for that is, um, a couple of districts are finding that their, um, their ten-year-old buses, uh, it's a dumping ground for ten-year-old buses, so other districts are getting five-year-old buses, and they're pushing all the ten-year-olds to districts that are allowing ten-year-old buses. Ten-year-old buses mean nothing to us per se, except for the fact that there's a lot of breakdowns, which means there's a lot of turnover in buses, which means that sometimes a lot of buses are late or breaking down on the road. So, it's just an item, I, um, dollar value, um, on the contractor over a five-year period is a lot different than it would be if we were asking for this for one-year period, so that's food for thought, and then obviously, any of the other items that are in yellow would be discussion items, um, for the committee to, uh, do as they please with those.
Motion to refer.
Second, Mr. Hart, any discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes. Last item, uh, the agenda tonight might ask Superintendent Mr. Chico to prepare a report on all the schools in addition for us, so we kind of have an idea of where they're at, the basic construction, what we have going on, and any deficiencies.
We, uh, we appreciate, uh, this was, uh, Josh asked for piece information, and instead of looking at it as, we'll get something in a Friday email, I thought, Ken agreed, that it would be good if we could take a snapshot of where we've been in the last four years, and what we've done at each building, we're all very clear about all the hard work that, that has been, uh, done in the schools, both supported by the school committee, that's supported by the city council, uh, and that, that's just been done internally, to, it's kind of a, a new start, a fresh start, if you will, for where do we go from here? So adding on to the larger capital facility, capital maintenance plan, is what have we actually done? So, Ken, um, with the support of Lisa.
Linda.
Linda, don't always say that, Linda Sinaro, who's, Sinaro, you know how good I am with her names, she, uh, she really stepped up to help Ken, um, get this document put together, it's, it's very intense, it's a long document, we're sharing it tonight for the first time, our hope is that once we share it tonight, we'll get it to all the committee members so they have, uh, this at their fingertips, and we'll use this as, uh, for continued discussion moving forward. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ken.
So we, we highlighted everything that was not general maintenance, and any, any year that we didn't do anything, um, in that particular school, other than general maintenance, we listed that. So obviously, Tanzi, um, is, um, a major, um, major project, and it, it shows, but smaller items, uh, for instance, Spencer Borden, um, where we, um, we just, um, we fixed some, uh, caving in, uh, areas in parking lots, changed some catch basins, uh, we striped it, we, uh, crack sealed it, and, um, which is what we'd like to do moving forward on all the other schools, so we won't lose parking lots like the Talbot. So the more maintenance we do, the more crack filling we do and, and sealing, um, we extend the life of, of all of those parking lots. On here are still items that are in progress, so the, the committee, um, wanted to, uh, they approved the upgrading of drinking fountains, bottle fillers in the schools, so that prod- that, uh, part of this is going out to bid very shortly, and then we're replacing a minimum of two, uh, fountains in each of the schools, um, so every school will have one of those available. On the Sylvia, again, schematic work, on the second, uh, means of egress, we've got some playground improvements that are going to happen there, um, and drinking fountains, and then the fire enunciator panel that was put in over the summer, the thirty-four thousand, um, was a nice upgrade. Watson, uh, again, a ton of work, uh, that's happening in Watson, um, and quite a bit of work that's, uh, that's still left to come. Bonsever, another school that's seen, uh, some minor work, but also some, uh, work that was done in-house. Um, the, the big item on most of these is security cameras, some of the upgrades that we've done, some are still in progress, um, and some, um, are still planned, um, the, some painting, a lot of, actually, a lot of painting across the district, some of which we did, and some of which were subcontracted out. Um, Reteno's another school that, um, that had minor repairs, and then a few major repairs, and they've got, um, outside doors being painted this year, and, uh, I think that the security cameras in and out have already been, uh, have already been done. Um, Sylvia's also in for, uh, an electrical upgrade, fifty thousand dollar electrical upgrade coming up, which is going to change a lot of the trough lighting, um, a lot of our canned lighting, and some fluorescents in the classrooms. Um, it's, it's almost twenty cents on the dollar in cooperation with National Grid to change actual fixtures and not just bulbs, um, so, um, the plans have always been, all of the, uh, projects that we've been involved in National Grid, that all they want to do is replace bulbs and, and leave the old equipment, so the new wave that's going through National Grid now is they're actually replacing the whole fixture, which is what we've been looking for. A little more difficult in some of the schools, um, that are two thousand, two thousand eight era, is that some of those lights have to, are, are not as easily replaced, so we're working on that, and that's going to take place at Sylvia, and Henry Lord, uh, Green has seen, um, a small amount of work, but they, um, just had the gym redone this year, and, um, they've also had an enunciator panel. Uh, Spencer Borden, Sylvia, and, um, Green had the enunciator panels. Green worked a couple of years ago, we did the playground area, uh, basketball court, and, uh, and did a ton of painting, uh, the new gym, obviously, is in great shape. Veris, uh, Chilla Motor, not too long ago, security cameras, and some routine work, and then drinking fountain in, uh, Veris. Doran, um, Doran, we got a ton of work to do, masonry work in Doran is horrendous outside, so there's a lot of work left to do there, but we did accomplish quite a bit in the last couple of years at Doran. And, um, and moving forward, Doran will be one that, um, I will be coming down a lot with to, uh, to try and get that one upgraded. Henry Lord has seen, um, quite a bit of work over the last, uh, three years, um, and, um, quite a bit more still, uh, to do there. They will be one of the projects in a couple of years will be eligible for an MSBA roof, window, boiler upgrade, the, the, uh, project has to be thirty years old, so we're still not quite there with, uh, with Henry Lord, but before it gets, um, in, in too bad a shape, we'd like to do that. And, um, uh, the, a lot of signage at Henry Lord also, uh, flooring, Cuss, um, is going to have some upgrades now, we're doing the, uh, flooring in the auditorium, that, that auditorium is used more than anything, any of our other buildings, so, um, that one's getting new carpet, um, to replace, and, um, Morton, small items, uh, not a lot of large items at Morton, um, we're working on, uh, this year's projects of some of the, uh, security entrance windows, um, to help us out with that, and, um, the jackpot, with the exception of Durfee, is Talbot, um, Talbot's had, um, some major dollars spent there over the last few years, whether it's the gym, the painting of the gym, uh, new bleachers, epoxy floors in the main entrance, um, basketball court outside, security cameras, um, we are in progress of putting a fitness room in the first floor at Talbot, some new doorways, um, uh, to bring us up to, uh, ADA capacity, and then, um, obviously, the parking lot, which we talked about earlier, and Stone at Westall, again, um, it's a little over five and a half million dollars with the work that was spent at Stone by the city, um, where, we're in a, uh, in the middle of a MSBA project there to replace a small project there to replace a small portion of the roof and new boilers at, at Stone. RPA, going down the same road at RPA, we have an MSBA project with six million dollars there right now and that's roof and boilers. And maybe it, except for Durfee. We have the Pace, obviously, seven hundred thousand dollars worth of renovations at the, at Durfee building for the Pace. Some work at Durfee, we listed in here, the science renovations, which is three and a half million bucks, road work, different items like that. And last but not least, Durfee, oh, and the ad building too, we did quite a bit of work in the ad building and we have a hearing next week on the CPA for the window replacements in that building. And then Durfee's ongoing and moving along at an alarming pace.
I appreciate you putting that report together, Mr. Costa.
So just a couple of things. One, actually, let me start off by saying thank you, because this is a ton of documentation.
The thank you to Linda and Deb because all I did was talk.
Okay.
And they did all the heavy lifting.
So, thank you. And if we could pass along the thank you to Linda as well. Is it possible, not to ask for more, but is it possible to put a one-page together with each of the schools listed and what the total amount, dollar amount is?
Sure.
Just so that we can, I mean, you can make it an appendancy or whatever, appendix for this.
Yeah, absolutely.
The reason I ask for that is twofold. One, once it goes to the full committee, I'd like to see us put it on the website under each school tab, under each school link. So if you're a parent of a student at Tanzi, you want to know, you can go to the website, click on the tab, the dropdown, you can see your school, what investments have been made in your school, because people see them and I just think it's important for them to know this is the investment that's being made in that school. So for each of the schools that have had work done, if we're going to have Frank O'Brien, put it on our website or under each of the schools' tabs, each of our schools has a website link on the main page. This way people can look and see exactly. The other thing I'd, I'd ask for, and I hate to say this to Deb or to Linda, but if we could get these copies here, at least nine of them bound, and so that when budget season comes, we can present them to the council with our budget.
Sure.
Because they're always invested in our capital improvement strategies. What are we doing to keep these buildings from, I, I think it's, I think it's, and we could do that at the joint meeting that we have with them by charter or we can do it when we go down to them during budget season, but I, I think to put this report and bound it, bind it, excuse me, and hand each other councils a copy during either budget season or during our joint meeting, give them an opportunity to look at what investments have been made, both by city and also obviously by us within our budget.
So you want them broken out that way? Would you want them broken out that way or you want them?
I think it would be helpful. I mean, I think we understand that there's a partnership there with the MSBA funds, a percentage comes from the city, but I think for their purposes, to know exactly what the dollar value was within our own budget, which is limited and they know that, and what assistance the city's given through MSBA, that breakdown, that split, if you have it, I think would be really helpful in terms of going forward. I know it was last year's budget and the year before, you know, really capital improvement became a bone of contention, they wanted to know what it is that we were doing. We had laid out for them the work. I think now the fruit of that labor is being seen and so I think it's important to share that with the public and I think it's also important to share that with the council going forward for this year's budget. So I won't do that now, I wouldn't ask that that happened now, because obviously the full committee hasn't seen this, but if it needs a motion Monday, I could certainly do it then. You know, or Mr. Hudson, actually, it was your, your idea, so I, I'd really, I'd appreciate it if you did, made the motion to have it shared, not only with the city council, but also, you know, on each of the school websites, so that parents can see what investments are being made in their schools in terms of dollars and also the photo speak volumes, I think, to actually see the windows, the roofs, the boilers, et cetera, et cetera, that they might not see otherwise, I think is important. So maybe you could do that as a chair?
I appreciate it.
I'd certainly be looking forward to that motion and glad to support it. So are you?
I'd like to make that a motion, that we share this, the city council, share this with our colleagues on the school committee, getting this on the website, you know, and obviously it might take a little time, Mr. Chico, I understand, but again, I really thank you and everyone who worked on this, to bring this to us and thank Mr. Costa for highlighting the importance of sharing this with everyone.
My second.
It should be about me, second, by Mr. Costa, roll call please.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes. Any new business? All right, carrying on, is there most to adjourn? It should be about Mr. Hart?
Second.
It's about Mr. Costa, roll call.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?